Under God, into those who will be liberated and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everybody.
Welcome.
We could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved on second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Prove the minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Proven employee claims filed with the county auditor for two thousand sixty one dollars and eighty cents.
So moved second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Approved claims filed with county auditor for two hundred and fifty six thousand one hundred and sixty four dollars and seventy one cents.
I'll make the motion second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Prove the resignation of Victoria Eschen, legal assistant crime victim witness coordinator. That's possible.
Hmm. I can't remember the date of when that.
The one.
Is that what it is?
Is she saying notice that I mean she's still over here?
Friday, the twentieth.
I'll make the. Second.
All in favor. Approved employee health plan monthly report act, uh, looks very healthy. We're sitting at two million and four hundred and eighty one thousand four seventy six.
True.
That's a good sign.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Favor. Through the monthly departmental reports and fund balance.
All right, those were in your packet. Everyone's pretty tight as they should be. We only have a more round of payroll and claims for this fiscal year. Um, we do have one department that's going to be over budget and that was due to a benefit change. At the first of the year and we could have amended, but we did not realize that the benefits had increased. So that was not in the amendment that was done in May.
What's wrong?
GIS.
Okay.
And let's see, I sent an email Fri- I think it was Friday to Rick and Chris. Uh, regarding EMA and I, they had talked that they were going to do a budget amendment. I don't see anything in the Department of Management at this time. So I'm guessing it probably won't happen because it's too late.
Right. I don't think that they're actually, they're not, I think they're not pushing that limit though.
Yes, they are.
When we looked at their, at their stuff and they just put in the, another revenue.
Um, as of now with the revenues, and this was just ran this morning. With the revenues and the, um, expenditures. He's four percent, four point six five percent over budget. But still on the expenditure side, and I know it came, they had grants come in.
Mm hmm.
And so that revenue line should have been amended along with the expenditure line and that would have balanced itself out. So. That's where we're sitting with all of those. Otherwise everything is.
But they're okay with their fund balance, but they still have money in that account.
Yeah, but the, the budget's different than their fund balance. Yeah, they still have money in their fund balance, but this is what they budgeted for. Their actual budget for this fiscal year. It should have been amended.
All right.
Okay, moving on, I.
Want to prove those?
I'll make the most of approval. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris. Please sign file following the newer management plan, Brian Kress, Liberty Township, section five.
So moved. Look, I was used to.
All in favor.
I was, and now there's usually more, and it's like, where's the rest of this?
This one today.
Aye.
Aye. Discuss mental health disability services, physical twenty six budget and rent. That's a tricky one as. With them coming under state control. We have to rent them office space in their existing office area, although it is shrinking some because. The veterans affairs and. General services cannot be in there. So we'll have to carve out a new office for them and really still trying to get. Confirmation. Whether there's any other shifts that have to happen within that office, it changes everything. We have to come up with a fair rental agreement. Here's office space.
Press you at Benson, let me need to get a realtor in the, look at this.
Sometimes they, I know in the past we've had it where they've taken the square footage and then a realtor has enough. Knowledge that they can calculate out, calculate out the square footage to what rent is in the area. I don't know if there's anybody around that still does that. I just know in years past we've had that happen. I wouldn't even know what office space is going for in the area.
I don't see conflict if you want to do that, I mean. I can ask, I can ask my boss.
Yeah.
He does commercial, I don't do commercial.
Yeah, the only. I would think somebody like Steve Wall or somebody like that.
Jason Strano's my boss. Yeah, he has that space down. Right in one fifty, around two twenty. I can just ask him what office space goes for, for square foot and then.
You can come and give you a calculation on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do something because she's got to get her budget going.
Well, and I think she's pretty close to having it completed. And so that will be an amendment that we will do right after the first of the fiscal year. Um. Salaries have been set, I'm assuming it's by the, this DAP board that sets salaries.
Yeah.
I think so.
So.
We're going to do this.
Yeah, we need to get into that conversation to make sure.
Yeah, I, I, kind of the way I am looking at it, the board, you don't have a choice.
That's kind of the way I see it as well.
You're just gonna, whatever they dictate, that's the way it's going to be and then it will be reimbursable.
Me.
Yeah, just for clarification, state reimbursed all costs.
Mm hmm.
But it's a. I guess it's a upfront each month reimbursement.
Yeah.
Rumor has it that they're going to give us startup money. I don't know. So really the only thing the county will be paying. Is the employee's salary and their benefits. I verse, if I got all of that.
But they'll still be.
And then we will get reimbursed for that is what we're being told.
And they technically stay county employees.
Mm hmm.
But they're just paid by the state.
Yeah, that's the weird dichotomy since their twenty eighty agreement, but yet they're employees as well. So we'll have to get into those HR conversations.
Oh. Don, you want to contact, uh, Strail and see what he says?
Yeah, send him this message.
Okay, thank you. Uh, meet with members of the VFW regarding additional statute and the memorial.
Clayton George.
Okay.
Morning.
Thank you for putting on the agenda here this morning and, uh. Appreciate that and appreciate everything that the past board of supervisors and the present, present board of supervisors have done. To support this memorial out here. It's got a lot of meaning to. Uh, the veterans in the community and the families and stuff of the community of the veterans and stuff. I also want to thank you for the cooperation that we receive. Uh, for the providing electricity for the lighting out there, for example, and the water, we got to do cleanup using the water spigot. You know, the cooperation with lawn care staff and stuff out there trying to keep things cleaned up and on there. So that's very much appreciated. And, uh, we've, the committee feels that is. Really great that the board of supervisors and the county social court in this by line memorial out here in the courthouse grounds. Again, thank you very much for all. Uh, I had been. I, you and George have been on the. Beginning of the memorial committee and stuff like that. Uh. So we've had a lot of things, good that's happened out there and stuff, a lot of donations and fundraisers and stuff to keep things going out there. So. I had, uh, some people from past Navy veterans had contacted me about, uh. A statue of the sailor or something out there. So. Uh, I said I would, uh, go to work on seeing if I could find support for that stuff and everything. So I, I wrote up a letter and I took it to. Couple of different veterans meetings and stuff like that and, uh. Uh, so the people that signed this, the letter states, first of all, we'd like. To state the committee has done a great job designing and structuring a memorial at the Buchanan County Courthouse grounds. This is a memorial project that does a fantastic job of our inventors and for their service and sacrifices to our nation. The statues in themselves tell a story. Respect. Respect requests that the committee would consider an additional Navy statue in honor of those that served the US Navy. The US Navy has many branches that make up its department. To name some of these are the Naval Fleet, Naval Aviation, CBs, Construction Battalion, Search and Rescue Units, Navy Corpsman Minutes that also serve with the Marines. And also the Navy SEALs and et cetera, et cetera. Little trivia, nineteen oh seven, President Theodore Roosevelt sent sixteen naval battleships around the world to show our naval strength. We must never forget the two thousand eight naval personnel that died during Pearl Harbor attack, as well as the ships that sunk at sea. Naval pilots shot down in dangerous, dangerous missions of the SEALs and et ceteras. The statue of the sailor would wonderfully, would be a wonderful addition to the memorial to honor those that served the United States Navy and their sacrifices. Many will be grateful if done. We would suggest the southeast corner of the memorial would be a good location. Uh, and another trivia thing along with the army and everybody, the different branches are celebrating their two hundred and fifty. Years day as well as the Navy and their official date would be October thirteenth of seventeen seventy five. With respect and honor and just say, I didn't do a big effort to get his signatures on there. So I went to a couple of different leisure meetings. On stuff and a VFW meeting and I got, quickly got, uh, two of twenty eight signatures and support. So. That's the letter. So I guess we're here, me and George here is the day to say that our committee voted to, uh. Proceed with the statue out there and we do have. Reserve money that's in place to do that and will continue to do fundraisings and stuff to support that. So. Uh, I'm right here for the board of supervisors asking them for the approval to put that statue out here. There's an open area on, out there in the southeast corner of the memorial that would be fitting and stuff. So. That's why we're here today.
Cost to the county?
No cost to county. We'd be doing the foundation work and everything, the setting of the statue and everything. So. And there will be no additional lighting added. We had a request and we brought it up at our meeting about. Maybe put some lighting shining on the statues and, and we voted that idea down because we figure we have sufficient lighting out there that shows everything up very well.
And John, we started this project back in about two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And the county, other than the support of water and electricity, the, the county has not. Put one penny into that project. We've raised, everything we've done, we've raised, uh, through the committee and, you know, the community has been extremely generous.
Well, it looks beautiful out there. I think it's a great tribute.
Approximately what size would this statue be?
Uh, I think they're about seventy two inches, I believe, or something like that. We're, we have finalized, uh. We're going to be checking, George will be doing most of that, checking in the availability of statues and stuff. Uh. They're about five thousand dollars, what they are. And there's been suggestions about the Navy sailor, about the lone sailor with his sea bag, you know, and, and stuff. So. There's a couple of different options out there and stuff and where we can get them and receive them from. So.
Sounds like real consistent with what you got out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sounds very. And the statues are essentially they're poured concrete. Uh, one of the statues we got from a company that's based. Side of Rochester, Minnesota. Uh, and that was the, uh, it's, it's referred as Military Cross of the Soldier Kneeling. And the, the other two statues came from a company on the Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Thank you.
Any other further discussion?
So if somebody else, like if the army or the air force said they want a statue out there, kind of come over.
We've, we've got some of the branches already covered out there. The only one that's not covered is, uh. Uh, and I look at it as the sailor statue is very. The Navy dress and uniform, the Coast Guard and naval is very close. You know, they copycat each other pretty close, you know. Uh, and we would, and that would brought up our committee, you know. John, I think you were air force. So if we've, if we have a request similar to this. Uh, from air force people and stuff like that, then we'll have to move forward and deal with it at that time.
Just a comment that there are a lot of naval veterans that are in our county and very few air force.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And the same with Coast Guard, they're very minimal Coast Guard, uh, because that's a small branch, you know, and stuff. So.
Well, John, as an air force medic that dealt with some Navy guys through a variety of things. I immediately thought of a guy holding a bottle or the Navy guy, you know, dribble.
I look at along the pole and then. I'm.
The thing is about, we all served our nation for our freedoms, you know. Thank God for veterans and stuff. And I thank board again for all the support on all this.
Can I get a motion to allow VFW to, uh, move forward with their project?
John, it would actually be the Buchanan County Memorial Committee Operation Eleventh Hour.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Best wishes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And before we put it in place.
You know, we'll bring it to you, your consideration and approval. Because it's, uh, again, although technically, and, and I know Keith, you brought up the concept of, uh. Ownership and all that and technically. Uh, Operation Eleventh Hour owns the memorial that's on the courthouse grounds. And, uh, and I know I'm digressing a little bit and, and Keith, you brought up the concept of actually. Getting some type of a, uh, written contract in place because everything we've been doing has been based upon motions by. The county board of supervisors.
I think that was our insurance guy, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. We follow what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, I mean, good, the. Operation Eleventh Hour, our committee, we have the site insured for liability and, and other issues as well. So. Uh, technically, if anything goes wrong, it's, it's on us. If, you know, someone gets injured or whatever else, or if there's vandalism on the site. Our insurance policies have that covered.
Thank you. Thank you for reiterating that.
And when we first started that, I had checked our insurance agent about insurance out there and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
And that, we were initially kind of thinking about, you know, if it could be insured through the county and then. The committee would reimburse the county for the cost of that part of the insurance policy and they said that could not be allowed. So.
Yeah.
And, and also, and we wanted to have. Distinct separation from the county for that standpoint that protect the county from potential liability issues. And so again, we, we have fundraisers that we do, we've been doing about semi annually now to raise some money that we need, uh. Cause we, we've got, our insurance costs are, you know, over two thousand dollars a year to take care of the insurance.
Yeah, thank you.
Sadly, the. Legal, uh. Problems, no matter how tough it makes you try and insulate, they're, they're still going to go after, whatever they can go after them. Yeah, I'm glad that you guys have responsibility for it. You've done a great job with it.
And we don't, you know, we want to ensure that the, uh, that the residents of Buchanan County are protected. I mean, that's, that's our big concern. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Best wishes on your fundraising efforts.
Sorry, yeah.
Get it in place.
Well, again, I still think the Navy guy bent over holding a bottle would be appropriate. Hey, the closest I came to real combat was one night in a bar with some guys from the Enterprise.
True story. Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Okay, next, discuss the curves in the jury room and courtroom windows.
Guys, you're not getting any better.
Hmm.
Here we, we're stuck in the same spot.
Yep. Have you had, uh, somebody come in and give us bids on this idea or? Clayton, you want to enter this discussion too?
This is for the courtroom, the cell.
The courtroom windows and.
And the jury room.
And the jury, the, that wall in the jury room.
I can't remember the individual's, uh, name that came here, but it was kind of lined up through Larson Construction. We had an individual come in and give us a quote and I don't know. We did have a quote on that for repairing them walls and painting it and, and after we got that done, I, I can't remember about the same time periods when we had that condensate pine. Plugged up and all that water came down around and remember the water running down in the restrooms and down the wall and. They did a lot, did a lot of damage to them walls up there because of that condensate leak coming down through the ceiling. So. I don't know where that bid and that quote, uh, I don't know. Some of my old file papers that I left here, got put over there in the cabinet, if that would show up in there, if you look through that or not, I don't have no idea. And, and if, yeah, I guess you've lost and maybe who did that, maybe Corey Kress could help out, say who we brought in and then contact that company and say. Sign out what they quoted us on that, but I, I would probably reach out to Corey and see what he knew about it. See what his recollection were on the whole thing.
It was still right after the second meeting.
And as far as the courtroom, uh, we had an initial. Uh, company coming in, it was no cost. It was minimal cost. I think we spent, spent a hundred and twenty five dollars on that to have an initial, uh. Review done of the damage up there to kind of start, which would then lead to qualifying to get an historical building. Grant money and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And there's been, it's been said that maybe there could be a sixty forty, uh. Split of cost for that by getting grant money and stuff like that, but. I never moved forward enough to get, find out it definitely, and probably Leanne Harrison could help to give some direction on that.
Yeah, typically grant money don't, doesn't help us with repairs though.
It looks like November eighteenth of twenty twenty four, um, in the minutes, it says discussion. Was held regarding wire damage in the jury room and court area windows. Larson Construction will be coming in to review that area. Auditor Wogan Bush asked timeline for the repairs because those repairs have not been budgeted for. Board stated they're only at a starting point. There will have to be extensive planning regarding repairs in the courtroom area. Especially scheduling with the court system. After discussion, no action was taken at this time. That was November eighteenth.
Well, something we've got to get done. Um, I was on grants.gov and Iowa Grants last week and that, that's one of the things I was looking for, but I didn't see anything. Uh, published lately, so I'll reach out to Leanne. You can reach out to Leanne. Typically, like, because I know we're in the same place, Portland Acres right now, with the grants, they just do not cover repairs. You know, roof repairs, window replacement and stuff.
In trouble with, with something like that, you know how that works with historical buildings. They want you to keep pretty much things the way they are. Not trying to do a lot of modernizing and changing of. You know, the walls or the windows or anything like that. So it's kind of a touchy thing sometimes to, it's like you got to find a, a company that specializes in historical building work.
And I know, um, this guy brought up in the security meeting and. One of the days it was raining, there was actually water running down the wall behind the jury.
And is that, how's that come out with that individual that was going to come here and, and do, uh. Look at the truck pointing and do a building assessment exterior? Has he been here yet?
They were here last week and I haven't heard his report.
Um.
They were doing some work up there.
All that I know is he worked out in this area here. That's, he never came in the office. I never seen him anywhere in the courthouse. I do think Lyle talked to him a couple of times, but that's all I know.
Yeah, they had to.
But he truly, he did work. I didn't see him anywhere else around the courthouse. So.
Cause he was going to bring in a, like an eighty foot boom lift and bring two staff people in and they were going to do a thorough.
No.
Inspection of the building, the envelope.
Yeah, that, that part didn't happen.
Clayton, does the name Doug Steinmetz ring a bell for a line in architecture and planning?
Still with an old mine here.
This is from back of twenty twenty two. Yeah.
I do remember personally meeting with him and doing the one in the room up there with him. But I, I would have to rely on Corey Kress to find out who it was.
Maybe we need to put out a request for proposals and see if folks in the community can. Or, or else where to go.
We could do that, but it's a very. Specialized field that only some people want to have anything to do with. Cause you're dealing with not only plaster, but, uh. Uh, historical building.
One really, I mean, this, the building has been modernized in several areas and. Quite frankly, the bandage we put on it was by a modern, modernization.
There.
In all reality.
You know, seriously. There was done, there was an asbestos lab assessment done up there.
Yeah.
Because that's the first thing you got to work with the, any whoever's a contractor, they're going to want to know what's in that plaster and stuff. And so. It tested negative.
Okay, I saw.
That, that was a good thing to hear.
Yeah. Mm hmm. That's helpful.
There's a lot of correspondence in here with this line. Architecture and specific individual. I mentioned the statement, that's good. And. They give a lot of, uh. They must have a lot of expertise and that's the, judging all the communication on it. I, I would say maybe we follow up with. Uh, progress at Larson's and. Figure out how we can, especially, especially the jury room is even the most critical, I think. That wall is infuriating. I have to do it. It's two separate projects.
Was there anything in Martin Gardner's? Assessment? Having, that was a high immediate priority. Oh, yeah. So we have the justification to do it, but, uh, we just got to get it done, it sounds like. Right.
And to figure out coordinating with the courts, that's going to be.
That's a sure.
And in hindsight.
Yeah. The justice, I guess.
I did, uh, do a little bit questioning on that, you know, that court doors had to be closed down. They would. Been to be a thing in some of these cases, they might even have scheduled to go to another county, you know, and use their court.
Is there supposed to be another place for the jury to go?
Yeah.
Oh, it's our recommendation on how to proceed.
I'm like, we need to find somebody who would, uh, put in bids. We've got Larson so far and then the line, we could reach out to them again, but.
We, uh.
And those windows, I don't know if it's just like, it's, it's a re-glazing or if it's a whole new replacement.
Look, one of those replaced when they replaced the other windows, if you recall.
I don't recall any replacement in the courtroom. While I was here.
Well, it's not.
It was not.
It sounds like it's replacement.
Yeah, uh. This is the, uh, condition report from R B R.
Yeah, we're looking at that. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Here we go.
Yeah, in there, they specifically identify the plaster as a high priority issue.
Yeah, in there, they specifically identify the plaster was a high priority issue.
I would, uh. My recommendation, we. Forward with, uh, contacting Larson again and Corey Kress on finding the. That subcontractor we can end up. And what you think, we wanna do it in two projects, one for the jury room, one for the courtroom. Cause I think it is, your skills are needed out of the courtroom. Cause you're not talking the same. Historic preservation.
That seems like the right way to do it, but if we can get them on the same schedule, that would probably minimize the court impact. Where they gotta reschedule their re. Re, uh, relocate their, their hearings.
Yeah. Unless one company comes in and they can do it all.
Exactly, okay.
Okay, can I have a motion for? Contact Larson?
Some.
Second.
All favorites?
So you will contact Larson, yeah?
Okay, next, uh, discuss road oiling on Hundred and Fifth Street, Jackson Avenue. I, when I was made aware of this, I contacted Brian, cause we've worked with other quarries before. Uh, where we've been having dust problems due to heavy traffic, especially this time of year when all these projects are going on. And, uh. The quarries have been very cooperative in, uh, putting down dust control. It helped the residents that are in the median vicinity of those quarries. And you contacted BMC and you said they went out, uh, Sunday and applied dust.
Yeah, what was going on there, BMC had contracted from Dust Busters, they were supposed to be done quite a while back. But the material, Dust Busters had trouble getting materials in. And their explanation was, and this is coming from a pound down at BMC, that, um. The Northern Railroad, so I'm assuming that Iowa Northern Railroad got bought out. And so their materials weren't getting shipped in like they were supposed to. So they're having trouble getting the materials. This was Thursday of last week or so when I, when I talked to them. And then they said, well, they're gonna try, and the materials were supposed to come in on Friday. What they're used for materials is magnesium chlorine. And so. Um, they were gonna try and get, the materials were supposed to come in on Friday, they'd try and get out Saturday and spray it. Well, I don't know just what all happened, but they were out there yesterday afternoon and sprayed it. So they're out there Sunday afternoon spraying, I did grab a picture if you're curious what it looks like after it's sprayed.
Yeah, I drove out there this morning, they, they definitely coated the entire roadway, so it's good.
And they went out well beyond the quarry too.
Said they went out to Kentucky Avenue?
Yes, they've got us controlled out to Kentucky now, someone.
We do Kentucky Avenue also.
We didn't do any of this. Basic materials did some. Now they grumbled a little bit because Bruins will run their trucks empty in that way and come out loaded to make a circular route at times, so. Here we are, basic materials, we're arguing their competitors using their materials.
Sounds like good neighbors being good neighbors. Sounds like everybody. Got into it, that's good.
Well, I think we're, uh. That's one of those obstacles that you jumped over.
We did.
Uh, and last on the agenda is parking lot line paintings.
That was me. Um. The lines that really in the center, the ones on the outskirts aren't that bad. They're very difficult to see and some days it's pretty entertaining, looking at the way people are parked. Um, when it comes to jury trial days, it's complete chaos. I know we had the lines redone when the parking lot was redone, um, I don't know what the cost is. I, I wouldn't have any idea, I'd have to do some research or even who'd come in to do it. But I just wanted the board to maybe think about. Even if it's not done this year, if it can maybe be done sometime soon.
Chris and I discussed it the other day, I, I wanted to take a look at it today when I came in, they are fading really fast and. My recommendation is rather than white, go with yellow lines, which would be a lot easier to see, higher visibility. Especially when we get snow covered.
Mm-hmm.
Just throw that out there, what do you guys think?
Yellow is definitely better.
We can do blue.
No, we can't. That, that refers to handicap areas, I don't wanna tackle that. The other thing. Brad, do you have any contacts on people that do block, block striping or?
Yes, we will have, uh, well, we actually have about three contractors that are, that come in, do pay, payment, painting. Um, but I think your best answer would be the City of Independence again, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna ask, if you guys have any.
They've done that in the past.
And then the counties paid them. They go out and we pay them.
Yep, yeah, that's, they're here for this multi-projects, when I start talking, Diamond Bull and all these other companies, they wanna come in. They do half our, they do a hundred, basically a hundred miles when they come in, and. I think the city would be a good way to go if they can.
I'll, uh, reach out to the city manager and see if they negotiate something there.
No, we have Jason negotiate that one. He's negotiating for you, I'm just saying.
Okay, so the backstory is our IT director, uh, Jason, has been just phenomenal about negotiating contracts for us, so. Don't mind that at all, but I think that's a little beast.
We'll have to, um, also check, you know, if they throw some dates out, we'll have to be sure and check what the clerk shows us. And make sure it's not done the day of a jury trial.
I do know in the past when I was worked out to MHI, I negotiated with the city out there. They come up, did the line painting out to MHI, and in return, what we did then. I'd send a couple of our staff members in when they did their lines on the main road streets and stuff, I'd get to assist with traffic control and moving cones, so. It was kind of a. Scratch each other's back type thing, but I don't know if that's policy could have changed from what the city's doing now, so I don't know where that's at.
We've tried to have a pretty good partnership.
For everybody's gains when you work together.
Working together with them.
So if you get them to do it, uh, if you're board of supervisors, when they do main streets, you might have to go down there and assist with their line. I second that recommendation.
Wait a minute, I think I've got a poll told for something.
Since you might be hurt to see dawn, we'll have you in one of those.
They haven't been through the flag return yet.
Brad, I think the, uh, city benefits have had me hurt for him and, uh.
See why. If they got, if they broke, got rocks to the gosel, I would definitely be a favor.
Definitely, my recommendations, I would. Do it on a Saturday or so, Saturday morning or something like that.
Be sitting in place.
Oh, now we're, now we're.
That's overtime.
Yeah.
Costs aren't a whole lot more than straight tank costs by the time you add all the other benefits in. Not a whole lot of difference in overtime costs.
I've got a small portable block striker at home, but it wouldn't, it would take forever.
You guys put down the glassbeats when you, when you strike your lines, you happen to know or?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't think so. They just did some striking here this last week or this week.
Yeah.
Some more striking.
Lower speeds, I guess, visibility would be, that's imperative.
It'll take a long.
I'll reach out to the city manager and the street department, they seem to be, uh, well, we should negotiate, should try and get. And it would be nice to, to. Brighten it up out there. Make a little easier.
If you're really on glass beads, sometimes I can procure some. They bring in large wandies.
What are they for, reflective purposes?
Especially in those visibility situations, selling or raining earth pot covers.
It's, it's, everybody gets three to snow on it, you're not gonna see a man by.
It's interesting that you guys talked about this, cause when I pulled in, I had to look a couple of times to find out where the line was out there in the park.
Now, she not only controls the money, she spends the money. Okay, so I get a motion to, uh, have me contact the city manager.
Second.
All favorites?
Hi.
Thank you. Public comments? Honey.
Two separate comments, but first of all, Ryan, thank you for coming to the Benton County Free For All.
How did that go?
You're going to give them a gavel.
This one looks like it's pretty well used, we better not give this one up.
Yeah, they needed it. I had it pulled up.
Yeah, it got a little personal, it didn't seem some, you should never have public comments to get personally, it got.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
What were the takeaways, though?
The takeaways is, um, essentially it was gonna be an environmental hazard for, you know, I mean, your, your type of windmill. Blades, and that's fiberglass and, and there's no way that they could, that the public thought they could one hundred percent. Get rid of the dust and the environmental hazards of running them up. Was the takeaway.
I think they brought up the residents too that were involved in them.
Yeah, and I mean, there was like several surrounding property owners that had not been notified until the last minute and. They were very, they have a lot of concerns.
Anybody weigh in on what motion about, about it, or they had controls for this type of thing, or?
Not really, they were doing the water, they were gonna miss, missed it with water, just a little bit of a halo effect for the water, but nobody. How do you determine that?
Yeah.
I don't suppose it's gonna be inside this steep, this sealed building, but it's an old building. That I was questioning how well sealed it is.
Ten bucks maybe on building, yeah, yeah.
Well, then the water retention, the topography of that thing goes into a little creek that runs into the Cedar River and. And thirty years ago, that bridge that's there, the iron bridge there was washed out, there was one of those gully washing, um, floods. And there was a guy that, uh, it was late at night, was killed as a result of that because the, the. Approach was washed out, and you would see it and drowned in that type of thing. So there's a lot of water, and they're not gonna be able to, you know, it's, it's a threat to, you know, it's. If you look at fiberglass, five percent fiberglass is unrecycled, they didn't have an answer for that question. And, um, car, the carbon. Fiber particulates, you know, if a business, we're not gonna stop all of that. And that's deemed as, as, um, a threat to human and animal health. And then when you have epoxy and, and, uh, the fiberglass, you know, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a risk. And that building, my nephew was the one that did the inside, he, you know, he does the, the junk business type thing. And it's, it's, it's terrible, I was in that building on the, the day that they auctioned it off, and these guys just made a bad investment. And then, uh, the Wason family, which is the second largest family, farming family in Benton County. They've got, like the one guy said, moving into my hundred and thirty thousand bushels of, uh, beans that are of the same facility. So it was not good, and, you know, they got burnt a few years ago, Benton County got burnt a few years ago because there was a guy that wanted to start a business, tried to start a business. And with tire recycling. And even today, there are several buildings that bit that are full of tires because this guy went belly on. Now, they wouldn't say who owns this small company. And, and applies us research on that, but, you know, there's lawsuits all over the state with these recycling places. And, you know, we don't wanna wind up with all kinds of, it isn't just the blades is what they were gonna do, but what are you gonna do with all that? Where, where are they gonna go and, and, I'm, it's just, there's too many. Undebuts, and the risk is very far away as any, you know, they never did get into taxation. You know, they were gonna hire maybe five or six people.
Yeah.
Twenty-five bucks an hour maybe, but the taxation was not brought up and, and, you know, we don't wanna go back. On my fair bank that took sixteen years for the county to receive any tax dollars for that.
And this is just south of the, the Buchanan County line, so I mean, so it's really close to. Buchanan County.
I was kinda concerned as to how many trucks, um, they were gonna run on our roads. And, you know, where tho, those came in, so they did actually say where they mostly got their recycling, the blades was from South Dakota and someplace in Minnesota. So, and Brian was, had the foresight enough to bring a map of Benton County, so. We kind of then deduce, you know, probably come in from three eighty and, you know, that, it would be like the, the Benton Buchanan County. Road.
Yeah, they would, what they would end up doing, in my opinion, logical thing seems you run down three eighty, you jump off there, you run. South past the Buchanan County shop, through the county line road.
Okay, the, the, the Wasons, Wasons have a lot of semi-traffic going, Cedar Rapids and, they're, you know, they're big farmer and that's. That's gonna probably be moved down here before two, cause you see on, especially on the Buchanan side of the road. You can see the edges are, are turned, are rotting and, and it's, yeah. Somebody's gonna have to do something for two of them.
My, I'm trying to tell me about foot something in the budget for next year, so the discussion's been going on. But again, there we go, back to our farm market funds and trying to come up with the monies to do everything we.
Oh, I remember listening to it, didn't they say they're gonna have like six to eight trucks every morning? Coming in?
I can tell you exactly how many tons of stuff they're gonna run in and out per day, it's in my notes here.
It doesn't seem like it was well thought on, it was just kind of nice, you know, come here. You know, it's like, how, how should we let us get, let us do it good, and then.
Sixty ton a day.
Sixty tons.
Sixty ton a day.
Then, well, that's. Well, I questioned what kind of investment you're making, so we're gonna operate for six months.
We had nothing planned for the, including cancer, we were gonna clear the buildings to make them secure, so that they, you know, kept the dust inside and they had. Blades that were supposed to show up July first, and they hadn't done anything, done. I mean, I get why they hadn't done anything, cause they hadn't gotten permits yet, but, um, they really didn't have a plan, couldn't see.
Well, I understood that they're gonna be cutting them into chunks outside and then bringing them in to.
They, they cut them out in the fields. Off, or kiss those fields goodbye.
I'm doubtless they're gonna do some of the cutting in the fields, because if you look at a hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty foot long blades.
Right.
You got the issues with special permits and everything.
Yeah, and they were talking about adding to the building, so that way they chop them up outside. And if you, if you do some research, some of those choppers are basically a fan blade that's kind of whips around and. Where, where, I, yes, it got missed. Yeah, what's the best they're gonna do?
The other side of the coin, and this is something Clayton and I started several years back, trying to take the. Plastic ways then, the fiberglass waste and the litter blades, figure out a way to strengthen the soils with it. You know, when they start talking about cutting it up in one foot strings or strips. That becomes enticing, but it goes back to the DNR and the EPA with the issue of the microplastics. So until they can figure out how to encapsulate the microplastics, so that they don't migrate through the soils. That becomes an issue.
Now, thing I don't know yet is the Marengo factory recycling place. Was it the recycling place that burnt, or was another building, you know, remember that big fire that they had down there? Toxic fire that happened a couple of years ago, I think somehow recycling was involved in for those. And again, I wish I had an idea, he wouldn't answer, when they did the video presentation, he wouldn't answer. He's got the private domain, but who are, is that next year on, is it, is it a lion who spent tens of millions of dollars in the Fairfax facility? You know, is it, or other illustrious utility company here in the state of Iowa or what? But, or is it Black Rock, which, you know, even next year is involved with Black Yon and Vanguard and, yeah, it's, it's a big. Big, interesting situation.
I would think that anything like this would have to be, and I don't know what, if we got up to date with the state law. I would think that anything like this would have to be, and I don't know what, if we got up to date state laws or something like that. I think they would have that be permitted through the DNR and the EPA.
They actually went, it went back to um, land use and the comprehensive plan. So their, the whole determination was whether this fell into a land use where they could rezonate. And so they took it back down to the basic level as, to where this was not a good land use and it was not a good, good rezoning. And that was how the motion was made.
And why, if you, if you have the ordinances to keep the turbines out of the county. Why would you bring toxic waste into the county? Um, you know, to be recycled. So anyway, it's just, why, why are we gonna quit findings? And it's like, interesting.
Well, and then there's rumors that they're actually gonna go to Calford's Elevators, Swiss Valley Elevator site. And bring blades in there. So that would be here in Buchanan County.
And that's already been defeated.
Yeah, I didn't know on that. I didn't know how that was.
Camper and zoning was handling that.
Okay. And, and I wasn't so sure that it was already a zone commercial, but I didn't know.
It is.
Also, those star companies, uh, nine hundred year old, they only had seven employees. And if they go belly up, wind could be stuck in all of wind blades laying out of the land. That's a self set building.
The one.
Right next to the highway.
Yeah, the one question that was never, ever asked, which probably should have been was um. So these, the CEO and, and the person that was at the meeting, they were from a different company. And they're starting up their own company. So what company were they from? Like, was it one of these that already has all these waste fields of blades or, you know, was it someplace else? Nobody ever asked that question, like, where are they from?
Well, the, the other point that wasn't made either, you know, I had.
I was gonna ask it.
A sheet of that, it went two hours, but finally I got to speak, you know, a lot of those things that I had written down over here, but. Uh, what's gonna happen with the subsidies? I mean, I think Trump administration definitely is, is anti again, solar subsidies, subsidizing these. So if there isn't any subsidy money, uh, what are these companies gonna do?
Hopefully clean it up. And that's, that's concerning.
Where are we gonna, where are we gonna put it? Was that one up by, close to Mason City again, that was, that's full already, is that?
Seems like they're one up by Sioux City too.
Yeah. That's where they dumped it much. You know, and that's, that was a good point too, because the governor was at two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, it was Ellsworth. It was Grinnell and it was like three or four facilities, but they were piling up, you know, Ellsworth's right along Interstate thirty five, so a lot of people saw it. And they were supposed to clean it up and it's, it's been eight years later and, and you know, all gone, you know, finished. And the government right now still gotta, gotta get this stuff cleaned up.
Okay, we can't beat this to death. Well, any other comment?
Yeah, um, I'm supposed to meet with the mayor of Stanley. Right after this regarding a stretch of that county line road, trying to come up with some solutions. So if somebody wanted to write a loan when we're done here. Give them a call and swing up that way.
Something I was gonna do and I forgot to bring in, with the AC and our people uh, program workshop that Iowa State Extension is putting on. I didn't know if they had supervisor, if you're interested in it or not. It pertains to tenants and landowners on renting farm ground and stuff like that. I got the article home, came out recently and I think, I don't know if it was in a goodness paper reminder. But you could reach out to an extension director and find out more about it out there. But it's kind of different for the county because the county always puts it out for bids, so we are not individually negotiating with a private. Farmer or something like that, so it's, I don't know, contain a lot to, but it might be an interesting workshop. Being the county had farm, got farm ground and they ran out, so.
Yeah, thanks for that.
It's through the Iowa Extension Service. It seems to me, if I remember, I had workshops towards the end of July or something. But he is interested to reach out to the uh, director out there and she could help you with it.
Did you say you had two, two topics or did that cover most of your topics?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Brian the, um, the oil that you put on. What is, what is that? Because I just ran from that little iron ball from back there, it was a misery, you know what I'm talking about?
Um, well, basically, these ones, well, it gets put on, when we say oil. We're January, they're gonna go out and oil this road. That was a term that was used on, that's magnesium chloride. Instead of the oil, it's salt. And same way with um, calcium chlorides used that way too for base stable, or for dust control and base stabilizations. If we're talking true oils, what's been used is the, is vegetable oil, French fry oil. Or soybean oil if you wanna buy it new, but the prices are so spandy on the new. And the people in work can't find the used French fry oil. Largely because I think they're starting to process that in burning diesel engines.
So we, we have.
Ours was just oil.
Oil or tree sap?
I didn't know. Okay, I have no idea.
The term there that uses whitening sulfate, uh, it's tree sap. And it used to be, matter of fact, in Lee County and Henry County, they give it to them free. Because of their, at that time they had the paper processing mills in southeast Iowa. Well, those mills are shut down, so they really aren't getting the quantity of tree sap that they used to, but that's still a common product.
Yes, I mean, it's still rolling. It's actually dark for the ground smelling like this.
And so the, the tree sap, like it's all, it's still the most common dust control used out there. The chlorates, magnesium chloride and calcium chloride would follow in behind that.
Can you tell the address by looking?
I mean, for a normal person.
Typically, the tree saps are darker. But the other thing is if you get rains on, a lot of times if you watch close, you'll see how the, the tree sap will leach a little bit to the edges more so than the chlorates.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
And the calcium chloride, the calcium chloride, you do get a shower of rain on it, kind of like it reactivates its cell and stuff. And it's usually a lower cost. I, I did this for thirty some years and uh, and uh, my ruin out there, it's like four hundred dollars an hour a year to get that done. Four hundred foot, so I, because of the lower cost of the calcium chloride and it just seems to do just as good a job as the tree sap.
You brought up uh, dioxin.
I'm sorry.
You brought up like dioxin. That, that happened back in the eighties when I lived in St. Louis. And they had to clean up Times Beach, which is a huge recreational area, that they used this dioxin. Oil on, oiling all the gravel roads in it. And became one of the first super front fight uh, sites in the United States because it was such a disaster. Uh, causing cancer and everything else. They completely closed down the entire area. They all soils out, moved it. It was terrible.
That was a scary story.
Oh, yeah. And St. Louis Times, one of them that was a big investor in this whole Times Beach recreation area. It was a disaster. Little trivia.
Hey Brian, we, we got some updates this morning about W thirty five. Would you mind chiming in on that?
Uh, basically, they said they're gonna start tearing out the boxes, the box, and I refer to that by Kramer's. And um, they're gonna start that on Wednesday. Now, the Taylor doesn't have everything off the bridge. The bridge itself is completed. Other than the approach where the dirt work around it. And that's a different contractor, so it depends on when the other contractor gets in, that we can actually get the traffic flowing across the new bridge there. By the quarry, Rasmussen quarry. So, yeah, they'll start on the box at Primers where that gets open. They, I know they've still got the curb to do, so it wouldn't be a surprise to see them. Coming in and tearing out concrete at the ends and approaching the curves, because they're talking, July's coming in fast, that's when they say it'll be in paving.
And they're still looking at being done by October?
Yes.
How close is D twenty two being open?
It is open.
Are there still some sun each around in cones and stuff? That's like, I think there's people driving on it all the time. I think all that one.
No, no, it's officially open. I sent an email to the sheriff's department, to the board.
So the sign's on our end then? It's basically just cones and that one. Okay.
But I didn't go all the way into Manchester, so I don't know about that.
I haven't either. I haven't either. I drove Buchanan County, it's a, it's good.
Anything else for public county? If not, I would entertain a motion to.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.